Sanitation issue.
Call the order, the city council meeting for CDB's Grand Forks for Wednesday, July 5th, 2017 is now 5:48. But city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel, council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Fox Javinsky.
Here.
Tim Riapeau.
Here.
Henry Twetton.
Here.
Mark DeMars.
Present.
Does term call, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which is standing in creation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum, an opportunity for members of public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be referred to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council agenda as appropriate. If you'd like to address the city council, please come up to the podium to do so. If you're coming up, please state your name and your address, please.
Greg Mahar, 1429 Nate Circle Southeast. I guess I got some questions and comments about the paving. I wasn't able to make the meeting last week due to work. But I guess my first question would be, why are we in this situation? You know, why is this an argument over the paving? Mark?
Well, I can give you my honest opinion.
Okay.
Opinion that it's between you and your developer. If a developer wants to go back and pay for it himself and you guys, he divvies up the special assessments to you guys, we'd be fine. It's been a fact that when we went forth on this, stuff got back into it saying end benefits and all this stuff. That's why we went back and forth and talked about it. So that's why we're in this situation.
Okay, but what happens if we follow the policy? Whether there was going to be a road there or not, whether sidewalks are going to be installed or not, we have our policy. You can't just pass the buck on to the next development. Then that's why specials get outrageous.
If you, if you want to talk about specials, we can go back in original Laurel Drive was done and talk about what was done and how it wasn't done and how it was supposed to be done and how it was asked to be done by Mr. Peabody. Okay? It wasn't done. It was asked to be done by Mr. Peabody that way. Okay?
Okay.
So going back and forth in policy, we already went back and forth and talked about how we're going to look at the policy and developers agreement and how we can change it.
Right.
If we could create a street improvement district, that'd be great for the state. You can't, but it's illegal. Okay? But to ask the question of why we're in this position has nothing to do with us wanting, we'd love just to say, go ahead and do it. But we're trying to be mindful and think about how much it'll cost a special assessment for these people and try to figure out how we can do it the right way. Okay? If I was building down there and I found out that I had whatever dollar amount for special assessments, I would know that because I would have looked into it before I built it.
Absolutely.
And I would know that.
And I did. I looked at the city lots.
I'm not saying you didn't.
But as I get the paperwork from the city, and we're going to go with the utilities, and this is what I get from the city.
Did you get Doc a letter stating what was going to be done?
No, this is what I received from the city with respect.
Okay.
The only way I knew that we paid for the water and the sewer and the, I called him up personally and asked, what did it cover? This was after I paid a lot. Now, coming forth and doing my homework and stuff, I expect the city wouldn't be to follow the policy, looking out for the residents. You blame it on the developer. Who looks out for the residents that are going to buy it? Right? You say, Mr. Peabody came and did this, Mr. Peabody came and did this. Well, you could have said, well, this is our city policy. This is how we do it. That's what we've done in that area. But now, it's getting passed, the buck's getting passed us. And, you know, I hear it coming about $4,000. You know, it's only $4,000 spread over 20 years. Do you know what $4,000, one payment a year with 6.5% interest adds up to? It's about $7,000, $8,000. So we're talking more than just $4,000. We have a problem, and that's why it keeps coming up. And we got to figure out a way to solve it.
Mr. Vedder, can I just get a point of clarification? You said the, we're following the policy. I guess which policy are you, are you saying?
End benefits.
Okay, for new construction?
Yes.
Because our policy, actually, the city, I guess that's a bit of a misnomer. The city policy is that on new construction is that new construction pays for itself.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Yep.
And it doesn't talk about end benefit for new construction?
I guess in the PowerPoint that's on the city website, it does talk about end benefits. It talks about how cul-de-sacs will be assessed.
That's for reconstruction. But new construction is 100% to the, to the benefited property, which is, pays for itself. There isn't end benefit for new construction.
They're putting end benefit on my lot. On new construction. And I agree with it. That's what I'm saying. I'm, I agree with how the policy goes. I agree with me paying an end benefit.
You're talking about end benefit for, are you, Brandon, you're talking about end benefits for Brandon?
I'm on Nate's circle. They got option one. My lot would be out.
Yep.
And I'm getting charged an end benefit to pay for this.
For Brandon, yep.
To help the corner lots pay. Otherwise, the corner lots would get assessed a front benefit and a side benefit.
And that's all within, that's all within the new construction portion of it.
Yes.
Yep. So, yeah, so I guess what they're saying is, so the new construction, which would be this section here, would pay for all of that. How that gets broken up would be, you know, according to the way we have it for our policy for end benefit and that. But I guess what you're saying is that our policy does not give a provision for end benefit on Laurel Drive for new construction.
And why doesn't it, you, why doesn't Laurel Drive have to pay an end benefit?
Because, because our policy states that new construction is 100% to the, to the benefiting property owners, meaning the, that subdivision.
Right, just like repairs are at 60%.
No repairs are, we, we charge 100% on that unless it's a state street.
I guess, I'm really confused about the 100%. And it's what I'm saying is, due to the policy, you go to the PowerPoint that's on the city website, and it describes where you go halfway down the lot, halfway down the, or halfway down the block, halfway down the other side of the block.
That's not new construction.
That's reconstruction.
That's reconstruction. There's a difference.
It would also matter, even in everybody's mind right now, if, say Laurel and Brandon were being done at the same time, then it's, nobody would ever dispute, then Laurel would get that end benefit calculation. But we should actually have this conversation once more with our city engineers as to what we do when a new street is put in perpendicular to an existing street. Whether that, that existing street is one year, 10 years, 100 years old, how do we handle the end benefit question on, on an existing street for the new one coming in? We even have some disagreement of our own understanding of that sitting across this bench.
So, and then after, well, and I agree, but after I find out, you know, what's going on and stuff, I go talk to the city administrator of Grand Forks, see how they do it. You know? They have end benefits, they have rear benefits, they have side benefits. You know, in their new construction, you have an end benefit. You know, just like I'm, you're saying an end benefit doesn't exist. Why do I get an end benefit then? I'm new construction.
Because it's end benefit within that new construction, within that subdivision that is, that is benefiting from that new, the new street and that. It's because you're a part of that, that subdivision that is being paid for that new construction. So how that, how that gets calculated out per lot goes by the front footage, end benefit, and that within that new subdivision. It doesn't go outside of that subdivision.
Well, right. Now, would that street be in this, in this subdivision, the replat of the fifth?
Which street are you talking about?
161 feet that come off of Laurel Drive. Is that in my subdivision?
Well, that's a good point. But the issue with that is, is, and again, that's the point that Mr. Allsted was making. That was done at, at the request of the developer, and that happened before I got here too.
Right, and I know some of you guys weren't here. But we got to fix the mistake. You know, the developer doesn't take care of the specials. The city does.
We were a financing tool for the paving and reconstruction of those roads and the curb and gutter. Okay? We, if, if a developer wants to come in, there's examples, developers coming in, doing their own infrastructure and getting their own financing and doing it, and just spreading it across the lots.
Right, yep.
Okay? So developer can do that. Doesn't need the city to do that.
Right.
And we're stuck in the middle as a referee right now because there's been a bunch of the people that live in your development that have come forth and are asking questions on it when we're just a financing tool to make sure that we can do the specials on it, that we can bid it out to five, six people, and that's the way it's been, been done. But if developer wants to do the same thing, they can do the same thing.
But if you came to, if I come up here with an argument and you said, that's our city special, our city policy, I'd be like, that's it. You know? And I'm, I thought that was new construction is end benefits. I guess, I have friends that have built, even a family friend nine, or 19, early 1990s, he's three lots in, he got hit with an end benefit, new construction, back then. Now, I don't have any other examples. But, and that's why we're having a problem with our specials being so high over the value of our property. You know, it'd be like, it'd be like me saying, Mr. Allsted, I'm going to put specials on your lot for that 161 feet.
And that's what somebody has already suggested.
You know?
That the city paid for that. So which would, which would then say that we're creating a street improvement district and we're spreading that cost across the city, which is illegal. So, the state of Minnesota has not been passed by the senate to let, to allow us to do that. It's, you can't do it.
So since the city made a mistake on that 161 feet, we're passing the buck to this development, and now I have to pay for it.
Developer made the mistake.
You know?
A developer made the mistake, not the city.
But aren't you guys like the referee?
We're the finance end of it. We're helping you by financing it for you.
Follow the policy.
If you guys want to go ahead and do it yourself and pave it, get it all done yourself and pay for it yourself, have at it.
That's a good attitude to have.
But that's, that's the other alternative for you. Your attitude's coming at me that we're the problem, and we're not the problem here. It's you and the developer that are the problems. You got to get together and hash it out with him.
So...
Can you do that? Have you done that?
Well, yeah, I have talked to him numerous times, and if we would have dealt with this probably last year, where the four lots on the one side of Laurel Drive was still owned by Bob Peabody. He had a petition signed, which, as you guys said, meant nothing. But have you guys talked to anybody? You know, where there was, last year, where there's four lots Bob Peabody owned, they could have said, okay, we made a mistake, let's maybe say, let's assess those four lots before they're sold. That would have been a good, good thing. You know? That would have helped the cost. But instead of just passing the buck down to our development, and I'm going to, I'm going to bring up the, the utility part of it, where there was eight lots and one partial lot that paid for the utilities in my development on that 161 feet. That's roughly probably about $50,000. Now divide that by eight, another six, $7,000 added on to mine, then you do a yearly payment by six and a half percent over 20 years. We're talking a lot of money, $10,000, $9,000. And that's why we're having these specials so high. I went to Grand Forks, I compared some of their city lots, what they have for footage, the size of their lots. You know? Compared the size of lots, I went Desiree Drive, you know, theirs is at $50,000. Where it's a bigger lot. They have a bigger front footage. And we're sitting at the same?
How many homes are they spreading out over?
I suppose, I don't got the exact number on it, but... I mean, we got a cul-de-sac situation here, and I'm just going to go what's on the picture, but there's 11 lots there. And it's more of a road. I mean, we're talking about bigger lots, more expensive lots. $80,000 for the lot to have $50,000.
Desiree Drive, it does run a long way and does cover a lot of the different, more than 11 lots.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not.
So that's, that's when they get spread out more of the lot, more to lots, there's more to spread out, and that's why it's down. So...
Absolutely.
I understand what you're saying. I get your point. But there is more lots to spread that cost on, than what your development, because the way it's laid out and how short it is, that's why each lot over here and where you live is higher because there's not that many houses, lots to spread it around on.
Right.
And that's, that's the problem. And I understand what your point is. I'm trying to get across to you too is that we want to do what's best. We want to do what we can to make sure that we can get the road done. There's people that want the road done. We want to get it done this year. We want to get it done.
I am, I'm one of them too. It's been over three years to have a road that's not paved since the first house been built.
And that's everybody's main goal. Yeah, and that's what we want to do. And, and if maybe come across a little harsh to begin with, because I'm getting tired of dealing with it also. Because I'd wish it, you know, we just get done and do it. But, you know, if you have, you come in and you have some other resident come in who bought a lot in October 14th and then found out there's specials on it, when specials were put on two weeks prior to that, and didn't know it when they bought it. So, I mean, there's different situations that we are going, well, I wish you'd have known, or I wish I would have been told you.
Well, there's, there's a lot of issues in the developer. Everybody has.
That's why maybe I'm getting frustrated. I'm getting frustrated for the resident who wants to buy something and build. Because this shouldn't happen. She'd be able to buy a house, she'd be able to know what the specials are because you're buying it from that developer and build your nice home that you want to do. Okay? And that's where I'm getting frustrated on, is that when people want to do that and build a house. And that's, and if we could do it, find a great solution and say, okay, this is, this is the way it's going to be, and everybody's happy, wonderful. I wish there was a magic wand, a way that it could be, be done. I know the mayor's mentioned some things that he wants to do, and I've been, not for it, because I bring up the part of, you can't spread that cost around to the citizens. Is there another fund pool of money that's not the citizens' money to pay for that? And that's, you know, and I'm glad he, he's trying to come up with different ideas. But it just, we're trying to find that happy place where everybody can come and say, okay, I'm fine, let's build it. We're ready to go.
Mr. President, any, any view of this that says, this is kind of between you guys and the developer, we'll just sit over here on the side and see what happens. I'll fight against that view. We are more than, I totally agree with the council president who says we are a tool to get the financing done. We also have policies that you all have to try to conform to those policies. It's a framework, it's a grid. You have to try to get inside of that to make this happen. So I honestly feel like we're at the table with you guys. Right? We're at the table with the residents, we're at the table with the developer, trying to find a way to facilitate this paving project going through. For me, it does me no good to look back too far and too wide. And, and, you know, for me, it's better off to say, where's the opportunity to get this one done in a way that's affordable for these residents? It's kind of like, you know, you're walking through the woods and you're intending to come out on the north side of the woods, and then you pop out on the west side. And you go, how in the heck did that happen? I didn't mean to go to this place. I don't like this. I was headed north. But it was a whole series of missteps that caused that to happen. It doesn't really matter. But we've all been there. Anybody who's walked woods says, I didn't see this coming, but there we are. Well, it's just like that with a, with a complex project, like doing a residential development, including all of it. Drainage, you know, curb gutter, sewer water, paving, just every, all the utilities, freshwater and electric, gas, cable, phone, I mean, all of it. It's a complex project. And here we are at the table trying to see now this, almost the last step is to get this paving done. It happens to be big dollars. But we want to find a way to make it happen in a way that is, is some way fair and equitable to all these residents. There's quite a divide. And right now, this divide isn't just from Brandon to Laurel. I'm hearing of divide between husband and wife inside this development. We don't want to be, we can't fix that. But we can try to, if we find a peaceful way through this that's fair and equitable, that's our part. That's our part in, in, in getting this thing done right. And by the way, what does it do? It opens up the rest of that development for the sale of the lots. Right now, it's in limbo. It's a hard thing right now to move those lots until we see how we resolve this. So for all of those reasons, for the growth of our community, we need to get through this and get it done right and get it done in a fair and equitable way. And I'm troubled by the 161, 162 feet. That doesn't look like a Brandon cost to me. I'll just say it again. It doesn't look like a Brandon cost to me.
Well, this situation is going to raise pretty much everybody in that fifth, the replat, $7,500 more onto their specials with the sewer, water, and now the paving of it. You know? And I just look at, like I sat down with the city assessor in Grand, or the city administrator in Grand Forks, sat down with her, she described how they did their new construction and benefits, how they spread it out, you know, so the corner lots don't get hit so hard. So basically, what we're doing right now is with us paying that, we're relieving the corner lots on Laurel Drive of that benefit there. I mean, I suggested, hey, let's make it a dead end. Then the argument's over. You know, nobody has to pay for it then. You know? But in reality, that isn't the best situation.
That's a wonderful, exactly the argument in my mind. You would never do it that way. But in theory, one could. And that demonstrates where are that cost to go or not go.
Because just so you guys understand, it doesn't benefit us to Laurel Drive. Is what it does benefit, it benefits Laurel Drive and 13th Avenue to relieve traffic down there, for giving them another help. I mean, it'd be longer for me to go down Laurel Drive to get out of the, from my house. It's not a benefit to us by any means.
Thank you. I guess I'll start by saying I've, I laid out what my thoughts for the way forward were, I thought, rather. It was a long, long speech I gave, so I won't put that, or return to that. Couple clarifications. First, on utilities, new developments often pay for the connection fees and all those things outside. We did the same thing. There's duplex, or not duplex, twin homes that went up just to the east of you guys. They, they're paying for connections and water that go far beyond their, so I, I wouldn't, just for your sake, I wouldn't, it doesn't logically match on that because that is the connection that needs to be made for those, those utilities. On the Desiree Drive, you kind of made the point that I think is at the, at some of the basis of what we're dealing with is, yes, the specials may have gone down, but the lots were, what'd they say, $80,000. So the developer recouped that cost a different way. And that's, and then the third thing I'll say before I kind of go forward is, I, I take a approach more towards what the mayor's saying is, I believe strongly that the, that our role is not merely finance or project shepherding or any of those type of things. I believe that it's, that the city of East Grand Forks has a, has a strong, has a strong desire and, and role in making sure that these projects progress to the benefit of those people involved and all the people around, around them. So I, I believe that it's, it's, it is our priority and it, it should be our effort. So I don't want to wash my hands of any responsibility. What ha, what's happening here is, this is a, a series of developments that got started a long time ago. Most people on this council weren't here. I don't know if Clarence and Mayor Henry were probably here when Laurel went through. So a lot of people don't have firsthand knowledge of what happened when Laurel was platted, when it was put, or when it was put out for construction, all those type of things. The problem that I think a lot of people are wrestling is, is how do you, how do we just, or, at some point there was a negotiation, how do you do this? How do you do that? And, and why was that part not included? When was, why was it? I don't, I wasn't part of those talks or those negotiations, even if they were on the council, they may not have been part of those conversations. But that was a, a decision that was made between the council. So I don't want to take the council's responsibility out of it. But the council, the developer, and really none of the homeowners. But at some point, they made that decision. Whether that was, we won't do that now, save you some money, and then it'll happen on the back end, I don't know. So that's, I think some people are getting to that point where we don't know who's, you know, where the, the, the money got shifted to. So once you put in the one, pay for it, the next one comes in, while maybe they deferred costs, maybe they paid, they put it into the lots. We don't know that. So I get to your point of following the policy. I, I guess I'm kind of more towards the mayor again on, I believe that that part should be end benefited to, that 160 only should be end benefit paving. I don't think the utilities, but should be end benefited to those people on Laurel Drive. But, like I said, I just, it's a, it's not, it's not a, it's one of the problems of having a, a role in council, right? People that didn't do those negotiations, and maybe part of the reason why those negotiations and, and, and variances from those, those regular dealings shouldn't happen because over time, people forget how it happened. But I just want to say that that's, I'm kind of more on, online with the ma, where the mayor stands. Probably hasn't won, me any friends on, on Laurel Drive. But like I said, it's, if you look at it from 20,000 foot high view, it's, it really is the, the right thing. And, like I said, I just, I don't know how, I laid out, I think a week ago, how I thought we should proceed forward. But I think some of that time is not, I think we're out of time on some of that because we didn't send out things last week. But it's about all I have for right now until we...
Well, right, and Mr. Vedder brought up, if it's, if it's feasible, we would take back our letter of appeal of notice. Whether it's $10 or $100,000, if I don't have to pay for that, it's not my responsibility to pay for that. I'm not going to pay for it. You know? Whether the bid comes in, great. I don't think I should have to pay for that 161 feet. You know? Should I have to pay for a street on the other side of Reinhardt? No. It's not in our development. It was something that was missed. You're absolutely right, when Laurel Drive was paved, it should have been paved to the back of the lots. The argument would be, there would be no argument. And as far as the city policy, we've had end benefits on new construction. It's not something new. It's just like me, I'm getting charged an end benefit, which I agree with. You know, I'm really only disagreeing with probably $6,000 or $7,000 of specials onto my property. You know? Because we shouldn't have paid for it.
You can know that quietly behind the scenes, we are trying to find a source of funds for that 162 feet. Just so you know, I, I don't know if we'll succeed or not, but that effort is underway in a variety of ways, just as our president said. And if there's a legal way to do it that's fair to all of our citizens, if there would be, for the city's part, a pool of funds that wouldn't have to come out of the general fund, but is dedicated to streets, there may still be an opportunity for that. Just so you know, quietly behind the scenes, that effort is still going on.
One thing I'd like to make clear too is that everybody who sits on this council wants to do what's best. You know, I, I think they want to make sure we're taking care of and protecting the citizens. I think everybody on this council wants to do the right thing and do the things right. So it's, it's, you know, if comments come out saying it's the developer, well, it's, that's where it started. And that, and take Mr. Com, the mer's comments of where it all started at the beginning when everything was done. That's where a lot of the sits in the craw of how things were handled. Okay? And to come back and try to throw back on people is, is that the right thing to do? You know? Or what is the right thing to do?
I don't, I, I, I think your thought of going back and throwing on to people isn't the right, isn't the right term. If all of a sudden, they're going to build a street right next to my house, somebody has to pay for that.
Wait till Reinhardt gets done. Reinhardt, Reinhardt was supposed to be done this year.
Right, I think that's a county road and won't be, that's a different story, a different debate. But, is what I'm saying, if, let's say a road went right next to my house. Wasn't expected, but it goes there. Somebody has to pay for it. So you'd have an end benefit. You know? That's all.
But you're not going to have another road by you.
I know I'm not. I know I'm not. But if you're sitting in my situation, would you want to pay for that road?
You know, I used to own a lot in there. I sold it.
I, Greg, I probably can't sell it now. You, I mean, you're talking about a lot, one lot has $70,000 for the specials. When you build a house and you got to get it appraised for the bank, you know that $70,000 gets taken off your balance of your house? When they're comparing another house side by side?
No.
Gets taken down $70,000. Is the bank going to loan it? You're going to have to have a quite, quite amount of money down. You know? And it's not just the situation of these lots, but it's also the situation of developing East Grand Forks. I mean, the city knows until this year, the lots over by the golf course were pretty stale. You know, they weren't selling quickly. That's why we did $100,000 for the interest-free loans. You know, for the builders to build over there. You know, we're given all these benefits over there, and we have a problem right here of how these lots are getting assessed. And I'm not sitting at 70,000. I'm estimated at 45,000. So, I mean, if we got these down into the mid 30s, I'm pretty happy with it. You know? You know? I just don't think I should have to pay for a street that's not in my development, and since it didn't get done at the time when it should have got done, the buck's been passed to me. Does that seem right?
We're working on it.
Right, and I know, and that's, you know, I know some people are totally against it up here. Some people are for it.
You know, and just, there is a possible engineering cost savings reason why that didn't get paved as well, not just the developer. I mean, if you know you're going to put utilities in and go down the street, to pave it at that time and bring all that stuff forward, doesn't make sense either. You know, so, all I'm saying is, if you're going to put, you know, the street, uh, utilities down the middle of the street, you wouldn't have wanted it paved before, before you put those in and have to go back in. So there's, there, I don't know what, like, it gets to my point, is I don't know what the rationale. Some, we can put motives on people, and I, like I said, I wasn't there, so I don't know what the trade-offs were, but I can see another rationale for why that wasn't paved at that time.
And the other thing is, it's 160, it's 162 feet to nowhere, at that point, it's 162 feet to nowhere.
If that would have been paved, the infrastructure would have been down underneath it, so you wouldn't have to tear it up down the road, so. Mr. Pacheco.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Maher. You referenced your letter of appeal. If, if we found a way to get that 162 feet paved and it wasn't assessed to you or anyone else on Brandon, would you be willing to withdraw that letter and, just the paving? I don't think we can do anything about the utilities.
Of course we can, that's done and over.
Right. I know it's done and over, you can't go back and assess somebody else for those.
The estimate, the estimate, the estimate we have for that 162 feet is about $45,000.
Yep, and that's what I kind of expected, you know.
So my question to you is, would you be willing to sign off on?
I would say probably 95%. You know, I mean, because I, my concern is still the utilities too, because that's a large cost that was only spread out amongst eight, you know, eight lots and one partial. That's a lar, a larger amount of money, where 45,000 is spread out amongst.
We're trying to find a compromise.
No, I know.
My suggestion is, is if, if we can come up with a compromise, that that isn't assessed to your properties or anyone else on Brandon, would you be willing to? Because I can tell you this, if, if those letters of appeal are not withdrawn, we're going to reject this project.
I understand that, I do understand that.
And it's just, it's not going to get better. I can't see it getting better a year from now.
We all want to get this behind us.
No, and I agree with that, I, I mean, I, but here's the thought, when you guys, the utilities weren't put in because that, the fifth replat was replatted, wasn't, whether it was townhomes or whatever. But say that, say that was done, say it was done, it was replatted right and correctly, and they would have poured that 161 feet, they had done the utilities, the curbing, that 161 feet back there, because this was, that development was done. Who would have got charged for that? The people on Laurel Drive would have got charged for that. If it was done correctly and we stuck with townhouses that the first was supposed to be done, and that pavement, the utilities, the curbing was poured, you wouldn't be charging the replat of the fifth addition, you'd have been charging the people on Laurel Drive for that.
But that's where you get back to the, some of the sentiment about, that's, that was this decision made between the city and the developer, because you, the developer does, is trying to keep it as tight as possible, right? Because he doesn't want to overextend, and, and the city's like, oh yeah, well, let's put in all the utility. They weren't going to go just to 160, you don't put in utilities like that. You, you don't just go to the end and stop them, you would, you go to the niggas' manhole and then you, you start over. So, I mean, my point is, is in trying to keep it compact for the developer, right? That was the trade-off. So I don't know what happened in that discussion, because we would, we would have had to put all the utilities in all the way through that whole deal, and that's, we, we do it in, or the developer likes to do them in chunks, right? Phase one, phase two, phase three, because it makes sense.
Tossed his pocketbook.
Right.
I believe that 162 feet wasn't on the original plot with Laurel Drive.
Well, it had to been.
All the curbing gutter was put in, utilities were all put in for Laurel Drive without that 162-foot access there.
There was a 60-foot easement at the time.
No, actually, that came in, that came in when they did the pavement of the streets. Then they said, well, like, let's put an access in here at that point in time, so it was way after the fact.
Yes, it was, and that's what I'm saying, there was, when, when it was plotted out, there was a 60-foot easement in there, onto both corner lots. 60-foot easement was, was plotted out.
That was in there long before. That's a core, that's a core easement. They burned the staff.
She's talk, he's talking about the, the roadway, not the, not the storm easement.
Not going into the.
No, but actually, that goes, that goes this way.
161 feet is paved right now. It was plotted out as a 60-foot easement off of Laurel Drive, which 60 feet happened to be the width of the road. So it was kind of put in there for future, if it had to be poured a road there.
Mr. President, if this is winding down for this evening, I have to say thank you for coming because I really wanted to talk about this tonight. I like your perspective, and, uh, it's important. We're going to unseal some bids tomorrow, and this thing's going to either go or not. If the bids come high, this, this whole conversation we just had is moot because it won't go.
Right.
If they come low, we're going to want to find a way to get this done.
Right, and I just want to make one last comment, I know it's been stretched out, but when you say the city's just there to finance.
No, we're not.
The cities, the city decides on who gets charged what for specials. Just like Grand Forks, I got a map where they show what they charge for specials.
Yep.
You guys choose who gets charged on what specials. So me going to the developer and saying, hey, my specials are way too high, it's out of his hands. He didn't do the swatter and sewer, he didn't do the street, like I know Xaveral's does the sewers. They put it right into their lots over on King's Walk.
This is the reason why it's important for us to have a good policy and to apply it. Yep.
I just don't think passing the buck is the right thing.
The, the only comment that I was going to make is regardless of a objection to this project, the objection will never include the amount of specials that were already included on your lot for the utilities. That, that will never be something that's addressed by the objection or the court. It was, be just the assessments for this specific paving project, just, just for your purpose.
So there's absolutely nothing we can do about the utilities?
The, the utilities aren't anything that could be objected to at this time, there already been, there are special assessments, they're assessed, they're in place, they're certified, and they're not a part of the, the special assessment project that's before the council.
Okay.
Or potentially would be before the court.
Okay.
Just for your purpose.
Well, let's get this one right.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address, Dale?
I drive by every day, four or five times a day, seen no action over there. The sales tax is going to start pretty soon. What are we doing with the pool? I've heard nothing on it lately. Nobody's worked there for a month. And boy, wouldn't it be nice to have today and tomorrow and the next rest of the summer?
I think Mr. Murphy can address that.
Yeah, there were people out there today digging on that. Um, the issue with it is, is they dug down to the top of the pipe, and, well, I guess it would be on the southeast corner of the pool, the corner where the, um, the long or shallow end goes into the deep end right there, that is, that, that pipe is seven inches lower than it should be. Um, so they don't know if it's settled or what. So we met out there with the, um, the contractor, the subcontractors, the insurance adjusters, uh, we had our engineer there, and Reed and I were there on this. We wanted them to dig down, um, to see what there was underneath the substrate on that. Um, however, they were, the, um, the contractor said that their insurance adjuster told them to only to expose the top of the pipe so they could set the grade and to find out what the manufacturer of the pipe is. Um, in the meantime, we had a feeling that this was going to be drug out as much as possible, so we have gotten our bids or end quotes for our, um, redoing the liner. The liner people are, are actually on their way up here, they could start on that project to redo the liner even before the end of the week, potentially, next week at the latest. Um, is that, Reed, that's going to be what, almost a five-day project?
Yeah, they're drafting tomorrow, the rest being five days to third.
Yeah, so they got to get the, the, there's a couple pieces they're going to have to replace, they figure, and to get it flat. That's an eight, roughly an 18,000, just a, and some change dollar project. Um, they required half down for them to come up here, so we, as a city, we have paid that, that half to get them up here. And the issue with the pipe is, um, whether we, where the insurance adjusters for the contractors want to do is, they want to assign blame before they're going to authorize any construction of that repair of that pipe. Uh, according to our contract, though, we have, we were able to give, once we gave them notice, they had 10 days to start the correction process on that. That time expired on July 3rd. So we do also have an estimate from a local contractor to dig up that portion, because it was televised, so we do know where it is broken along there, and that is roughly $4,000 and some change to dig that down and to put it back at the grade, because that's, it's a six-inch PVC pipe, and that's all gravity feed back to where the pump house is. So at the end of the year, when that gets drained, it's all gravity feed, because apparently when they get those bigger pipes, it's harder to blow out, so they designed those for gravity feed. Um, and to put that back to the specs for the fall, so that it would, that it does do that, and that's about $4,000 and some change. They are ready to go on that, um, really as soon as we give them the go-ahead to do that. So where we're at with this then is, we meet with the contractors, um, because they are, one thing that came out of today is the people that installed the pipe, there is a, a return pipe underneath the one that is broken, about a foot underneath it, and they are going to do a pressure test on that tomorrow. Once they get the, they will have the results of that as well, so then that will tell, determine whether that return pipe is cracked or not. If the return pipe is not cracked, which we don't believe it is, that means then that most likely did not have any kind of substrate failure of that to cause that area to sink. So what we're going to do then is, if they do not do that, and we as the city have to hire, or give the contractor the go-ahead to do that, we film that, the work that happens out there, so that we can use that for any potential legal deal that we, we may end up with them, because if they do not, for example, so if they don't do that and we have to do that, it's going to, the total price, what we're guessing, is going to be about $40,000 to get it corrected to the point with the liner and the pipe to drain the way it was supposed to. We will then aggressively go after the contractor and who else we need to, under the contract, to recoup that, that cost. But in this way, we will, we should be able to salvage probably the last month of these.
The white is, it could be open this summer yet for a little bit, possibly.
We're, we're really working, we want to salvage the last month if we can. This has been a very trying process, and it's, I've been very, very frustrated with the, um, the insurance adjusters on this. They, they, when we were out there today, they were saying that they, in order for them to authorize any further excavation on that, they need to have their, they need to have an expert out there, uh, aquatics expert, review the, review that parcel, re, check all that out, but the soonest he can get here is July 17th. Um, we, they claim that they told them that that was unacceptable, so they're trying to find another one. Well, then there's, our season really ends at the end of August, because most of our lifeguards go back to school, so that's, that was unacceptable to us. So we have been working with, um, and where we're getting that advice from, this is working with Jim Straumann, who is the construction specialist with Canadian Grave, and he's the one that got the, uh, library to finally get the, where we, where we think we've, we've got, where it's not leaking anymore. So he, he has had some success with us, he is, that's, all he does is construction law, and he has been advising us on that. So, so if we do, we say, we've got everything lined up that we will construct it on our own if we have to, and we will aggressively then go after recouping our costs, including our legal costs, if we can.
Will those include?
He was long.
Do those include warranty, re, lost revenue and lost wages?
That can all be included in that, we have discussed that, it's, yeah, the, um.
That's what I brought up today with him too.
And that's what we brought, and when, yeah.
Okay.
I think everybody wants to get done.
Yeah.
You know, everybody that put a lot of work into it, and let the city put up to get it done.
I read the paper every day, pretty, I've been to the lake a couple days, might have been in there or something, I didn't see it, but I'm just curious to.
No, and what we, what we said today too is.
Like I say, I haven't seen anything there for quite a while, I go by there all the time, but two other quick things, and I'm leaving. Mr. Demers, I'm glad to hear that you don't want to run anybody out of town. You don't want to take their house and move them out. Glad to hear that. And the other thing is, I'm sad to sit here today and see a grown man come in front of the council and have somebody talk to him like a six-year-old. That was horrible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. Uh, move on to approval of minutes for June 20th, regular meeting, June 27th, special meeting, and June 27th work session. Move. Goodbye, Mr. Vedder.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Reapel. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lettings, none. Scheduled public hearings, none. Consent agenda, items under consent agenda will be adopted, one motion, however, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Does anyone want any of the items four through 10 pulled for discussion? See none, entertain a motion for items number four through 10.
Moving four through 10.
Second by Mr. Demers, second by Mr. Vedder. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassel? Uh, I'm sorry, Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Now, Dr. Seeta reports on officers, boards, and commissions. 11 regular meeting minutes of Water and Light Power and Billing Commission for June 1st, 2017. Communication is none. Old business, consider adopting ordinance 19, force series prohibiting deer feeding within his, East Grand Forks city limits, and the reference city code, chapter one and section 10.99, which among other things contain penalty provisions, second reading.
Move.
Goodbye, Park Chavinsky.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any discussion or questions? See none, roll call, please.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Motion is carried. New business, 13, consider adopting resolution affirming the petition submitted to vacate 8th Street Northeast as valid.
Move.
Goodbye, Demers.
Second.
Second by Vedder. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Excuse me, sorry, roll call.
Reapel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Motion is carried. 14, consider approving the special event application for Up North Hospitality to hold Rock Up North Festival and allowing city parking lots in the 4th Street Northwest to be used for the rib competition, beer gardens and loud music contingent, like, contingent upon the state's approval of alcohol catering license and the $50 fee being received by the city, which the area received the fee.
That was received this afternoon, so I'll remove that if we just want to.
Goodbye, Demers, second by Tweeten. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims, consider authorizing the city administrator, clerk, treasurer to issue payment, recommend bills, and payroll. Motion.
Second.
Move by Riappel. Second by Vedder. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Riappel?
Yes.
Tweeten?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Park Chavinsky?
Yes.
Mayor Gander.
I think I've served with Mr. Tweeten for too long because I'm going to go back now to the history of the founding of our nation. Tonight, we saw community members come before us and impact the decision-making process inside the halls of government. That's how this government works. That's why we are here, to deliberate and to decide with the input of people. Sometimes they cannot be here and we make decisions on their behalf, but other times, they do come before us and, and have influence on how we make our decisions. If you go back to the founding of our nation, it was the Boston Tea Party and the, and the throwing apart the ship cargo of tea. Why? Because of taxation without representation. You wanted our money, but we could not have a voice in how things were done. And we said, no, that's not going to work. We want a government which will be of the people, by the people, for the people. That's what we'll have. And so we have it. And sometimes when we're in the middle of it, it, uh, it can be challenging. And we might forget that the sun is shining outside and it's a beautiful day. But this really is why we are here. It is why I would not want to be anywhere else in the world than right here in this country. Because people have a voice and every single one has a voice. Uh, and they should, and they must. And so to each of you that, um, that listened and, and really tried to consider those points of view of these dear citizens that came before us, thank you. That's how we serve these people the very best. Thanks.
Vedder.
Uh, the only thing is, uh, our county fair started today, goes through Sunday. So get out and support the county fair.
Park Chavinsky.
Nothing tonight.
Riappel.
Nothing.
I'd just like to recognize Jason Stardoll and uh, Public Works Crew. They did an outstanding job of removing a tremendous amount of trees, branches, and so forth. And uh, if you drove around town enough, you'd find out that there were some close calls on uh, trees, which is what happened to them. Uh, Jason, how many loads did you haul? Do you know?
No idea. Couple of weeks worth, you know?
You made the town look real nice, as usual. No further comments.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Uh, only thing I'd like to say is what the mayor said of why we're here. But it's also for equal treatment to everybody. Everybody deserves equal treatment. Doesn't matter who you are. So goes um, around to everyone. So that's all I got to say.
I already spoke, spoke more than I normally do in a meeting, so I'm going to pass.
Mr. Bellis.
Uh, nothing unless there's any questions for me.
Anything from the department heads? See none. Entertained a motion.
Move.
Second. Second by Fox. Motion by Fox, second by Mr. Demers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Both same sign. Motion carried. Mean as adjourned.